All right, good evening. Going to call the Schaumburg Village Board meeting to order for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. Thank you all for coming here to our temporary digs. First item is roll call, please.
Trustee Patel is absent. Trustee Claire?
Present.
Trustee Sullivan?
Present.
Trustee Medei?
Present.
Trustee Bishki?
Present.
Trustee LaRosa is absent. President Daly.
Present. We do have a quorum. I am going to make one of the point. Do hope that if you have any electronic devices that you please turn them off or turn them down so as not to disturb the meeting. Thank you. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask trustee Claire to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, trustee Claire. Next item is the approval of minutes for April 22nd, 2025. Questions, comments?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the April 22nd, 2025 executive session minutes.
Move to approve as presented.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries also. Thank you. Next item is the approval of expenditures for $4,322,126.70.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Patel is absent. Trustee Claire?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Medei?
Aye.
Trustee Bishki?
Aye.
Trustee LaRosa is absent.
Four ayes, don't ayes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have some presentations. We have a lot of people here for different things. The first one up is Youth Orchestra, Tiana. We'll make some presentations here for the youth program.
Great, thank you. Mayor Daly and trustees, thank you for your time this evening. I want to thank each of you, along with village manager Brian Townsend, on the continued support of the young artist programs. The Schaumburg Youth Orchestra just wrapped our 35th season. Before I announce the village-sponsored scholarships, I want to mention on Sunday, May 4th, at the Schaumburg Youth Symphony Orchestra Concert, the Prairie Arts Foundation presented awards of $1,000 each to three graduating seniors. These recipients were Evangeline Silker for the Leo Chan Alumni Award, Amelia Sanders received the Keller Miller Scholarship sponsored by former trustee George Dunham, and the Ruth Park Senior Music Scholarship was awarded to Nadia Rosati. Tonight, along with Eddie Sugarman, Assistant Director, and Donna Robertelli, Young Artist Program Coordinator, we would like to present the Village of Schaumburg's Youth Orchestra Scholarships. This is the 25th year of presenting scholarships to students in the program to help offset tuition, rental of instruments, and private lessons. Now, as we present the village scholarships, when Donna calls your name, please come up and accept your scholarship from the mayor, Daly. Please remain standing until everyone has been recognized, and then we will take a group photo.
Thank you. Okay, why don't you come on down here.
Ash Dusshandron.
So if you come up, please stay up here so we can get a group picture when we're all up.
We have Michaela Gritsby. Kate Lynn Hanneman. Emerson Hickman. Samira Lea Jacobo. Alexander Kusama Rosati. Emma Zargoza. Are there any students that are here that didn't call their name? So we're gonna have everybody come together a little bit because we want to get a photo with the mayor, so just kind of squeeze in. If you're shorter, come to the front. Very good.
You're tall enough, Tom.
Well, I could tell.
Some of our brightest and talented part of the Schaumburg Youth Orchestra. Congratulations.
And if all the parents, just for a moment, could put their phones down so I can get a clear shot, thank you very much. And everybody smiles, smiling.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay, or if you wish to leave, that's quite all right. We won't be offended. Just to go down. We'll wait for the noise. Okay, we're moving on. Next item is a presentation of the GFoa Certificate of Advancement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by Lisa Peterson, Director of Finance.
Yes, thank you very much. What a tough act to follow. An impressive group of young musicians. But I am pleased to present to you the Certificate of Achievement in Excellence in Financial Reporting for the village's Fiscal Year 2324 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which was awarded by the Government Finance Officers Association. This is the 40th time that the village has received this award. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition for excellence in state and local government financial reporting. To be awarded this distinction, a government must publish an easily readable and efficiently organized set of financial statements. The report must satisfy both generally accepted accounting principles and applicable legal requirements. This document is audited by an independent auditing firm, and many hours are spent incorporating new pronouncements, meeting with stakeholders, preparing work papers, and attesting transactions to ensure we produce a comprehensive document that is accurate and transparent for all village stakeholders. While this is a collaborative effort, I must give special recognition to Francesca Fabian, unfortunately, she's not here tonight, our talented and tenacious accounting manager. Francesca leads the audit and development of the financial statements, and this year she did it with several new members of the accounting team. Her commitment to excellence truly represents Schaumburg's core values. I want to thank the village board and the village manager for your support and confidence in the work that the finance team does, and I am proud to present you with the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2024. I have the certificate and everything.
Your picture here. Use together.
Book two?
Sure. We can hold the book up? Okay, there we go.
All right.
As Lisa mentioned, it is quite an honor to receive that. Not every community does. It takes a lot of work by staff to put something together like that. Yes, it's a lot of numbers, but it shows that we follow all the proper accounting procedures here in the village, which is, of course, very important for not just the village to make sure we're on the right track, but for the community to know that things are going well. So, thank you, Lisa. We have new liquor license requests. We have requests from Mr. James Webster for one Class C liquor license for Uncle Julio's of Illinois located at 5 Woodfield Mall, new owner. Please come forward.
Hi.
Okay.
I'm not Jim Webster.
Yes, okay.
He's my partner.
But you could have been.
I could have been. But he's out of town, couldn't make it back in time, so he asked me to step up. We represent--
So give us your name, then, and where you're from.
My name's Mark Wilcox.
Okay.
I'm a lawyer. It's Chicago.
Okay.
Wanted address 320 West Ohio, Chicago, Illinois, Suite 600, 606-254.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So we represent Next Restaurants LLC. They recently purchased 37 Uncle Julio Restaurants in the United States. Several of them were in Illinois. One of them is in Schaumburg at Woodfield Mall. Due to the nature of the transaction, they can't utilize the existing license. It's going to be under new ownership, different owners, different tax ID numbers, et cetera. So they'd like an opportunity to obtain, fill out, and file an application for a Class C liquor license at the location, which permits on and off premises consumption of alcohol along with the service of food. They are currently in negotiations with the landlord, our client, to get an assignment of the existing lease, a new lease, whatever. If you have any questions about our client, who they are, be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Initial question is, anything changing at the restaurant? Any remodeling or anything else going on, or basically keeping the same thing?
We're basically keeping the same thing. There is not going to be, you know, we'll wait and see. Once they operate, they might want to make some changes. If they want to, they'll follow appropriate protocol, make sure they get the right permits and permissions before they do anything. But right now, as it sits right now, they're happy with the employees and the operations. They don't plan any physical changes to the location.
Okay. Questions from the board? Yes, trustee Bishki.
So just a question on the Class C. For the packaged sales, is that new to the restaurant? Is that a new feature? Because I don't know that they currently do packaged sales. I thought it's just on premise.
I don't think they do either, but it is the exact same license that they have. So they're just requesting the same one. I've noticed they don't carry out, you know, no alcohol. It's all, you know, soft drinks, that sort of thing.
Yeah, it's an existing, the same license, just new owner. That's why I wanted to verify that.
Okay, but the Class C allows for on-prem plus packaged sales, and I just didn't know if that was something new, because I don't remember that being an option at Uncle Julio's.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, but--
No, I did look into that because it struck me as a little interesting.
So there's no plan to sell packaged liquor?
No.
Okay.
Not in that sense.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay. You will need to come to the Liquor Commissioner's Office, fill out all the paperwork, look for, there's a background check, an application fee, et cetera, all of that. That's in the Liquor Commissioner's Office. It's also the mayor's office. In this case, it's located on the fourth floor, but you can talk to Magdalena. Is her name? I don't, her extension is 44.
I believe Jim Webster has already talked with her as well as--
All right. Anyway, once all that's completed, then a liquor license will be issued.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and attention.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. The next item is a request from Mr. Daye. I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that correctly. Mystery? Okay. For one Class A liquor license for Tabula Modern Restaurant, Indian Restaurant located at 1091 North Salem Drive. I assume this is over by Salem and Golf?
Yeah, Salem and, yeah, Golf.
Okay. Okay, so please, this is a new business, so we ask for your name and address for the record.
Yeah, there is there. I'm on group. Patel, I'm his partner.
Okay.
So we both together and--
Okay. Well, why don't you come on up too, then? All right.
So we basically bought the existing restaurant. Signor Chopstick was there for a couple of years.
Okay.
And he wanted to get out, so the concept he had wasn't working out. So we bought from him, and we converting the menu into Indian restaurant, like a cafe-style Indian restaurant. And we want to sell cocktails along with the food. So in order to sell it, beverages, we need a Class A license.
Right. Okay.
It's just the menu is changed to Indian, more of a North Indian cuisine.
Sure, but you're not doing any major remodeling or anything like that?
No, just cosmetic paint. We replaced the furnitures, like a booth and the tables and chairs. Just updating the plate, facelifting.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board?
No.
No? Okay. Then, as I mentioned to the other gentlemen, you'll need to work with Magdalena in the Liquor Commissioner's Office, which is also the mayor's office on the fourth floor, fill out all the paperwork, go through background check, pay the fees, et cetera, and assuming all is good, liquor license will be issued.
Thank you.
Okay. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Consent Agenda, but I am going to ask for indulgence from the board to deviate just a little bit. I want to take proclamations. We have two gentlemen here from American Legion. Please come forward, and we have a proclamation for them, so if you'll bear with me, I'm going to read that, and we'll do that now separate before we get into the consent agenda. So please, hang with me one second while I read this, okay? Whereas the poppy is a symbol of hope, the spring after the end of World War I, poppies began blooming in the killing fields across the Western Front. Now, I assume you've probably read that or seen pictures of it. It's pretty, yeah, it's pretty amazing to, having read that story a number of years ago, you know, it just kind of blew me away. Anyway, whereas every Memorial Day weekend, American Legion posts across the country seek donations for poppies. And whereas the funds raised go to help veterans-- And whereas the funds raised go to help veterans, locally Schaumburg Hoffman, American Legion Post, 1983 raises upwards of $10,000 annually, and recently donated several thousand dollars to purchase an electric wheelchair for the North Chicago VA Hospital to help burn victims and to assist those with PTSD, as well as women veterans and their children. And whereas this year, the post began donating food and other essentials to veterans through the VA clinic in Hoffman. And whereas, just as important, every dime goes to help veterans. There are no overhead costs, and whereas the poppies are made by disabled veterans in VA hospitals, and the money the post pays for the poppies goes back to the disabled veterans. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Tom Daley, village president of the Village of Schaumburg, on behalf of the Schaumburg Village Board, do hereby proclaim May 23, 2025, as American Legion Poppy Day in the Village of Schaumburg. In witness thereof, I have hereto set my hand and cause the seal of the Village of Schaumburg to be affixed this 13th day of May, 2025. Thank you. Turn here and face this way. Come on over here. Okay, here we go. Thank you very much again. Okay. Once again. Okay, now, we're going to turn to the consent agenda. There is, if you have a copy of the board agenda, there's a write-up about it on the front, but basically, the consent agenda will be read by the village clerk in its entirety, voted on as one motion to approve. If you wish to discuss an item further, I ask that you signal that you want that item pulled off for further discussion, and we can discuss that under committee reports. Otherwise, all items be approved in one motion, again, as indicated to approve. So, will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Number nine, one-day liquor licenses. The motion would be to approve the request from Pastor Jerry Hayes and Mr. Macy Kilbassinski of St. Peter Lutheran Church for two Class D liquor licenses for a Memorial Day program on Monday, May 26, 2025, and for brunch on Sunday, June 8, 2025, at 202 East Schaumburg Road, and waive the fee. Correspondence. Number 10, correspondence A. The motion would be to approve the request from St. Peter Lutheran Church and School to hold a raffle on July 16, 2025, at the St. Peter Golf Outing at Schaumburg Golf Club, located at 401 Roswell Road, and to approve a variance to Chapter 117.31 since the ticket price is over $5, and to waive the fidelity bond requirement. Number 12, Engineering and Public Works Committee. The motion would be to authorize the village manager to approve modification for the design standard for the width of off-street bike paths for the Salem Drive Improvement Project, Weathersfield Way to Schaumburg Drive. B, the motion would be to authorize the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for the Bodie Road Force Main Phase III Construction Administration with Sioba Group of Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of $103,800, and approve the required resolution. C, the motion would be to approve additional expenditures for the Braintree Construction and Resurfacing Projects Design Services with Civil Tech Engineering, Inc. of Itasca, Illinois, in the amount of $138,210. D, the motion would be to authorize the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for the Walnut Lane Resurfacing and Multi-Use Path Project Phase I and II Design Services with Michael Baker International of Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of $632,795.82, and approve the required resolution. E, the motion would be to authorize participation in Omnia Contract Number PW1925, and award the fire station 51 Roof Restoration Project to Garland DBS, Inc. of Cleveland, Ohio, in the amount of $261,683. F, the motion would be to authorize participation in the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative Contract and award the purchase of one aerial truck to USSI Rentals, Inc. of Romeo Vale, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed the budgeted amount. G, the motion would be to authorize participation in the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative Contract and award the purchase of four Ford Interceptors to Curry Motors of Frankfurt, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed the approved budget. H, the motion would be to adopt an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 96 pertaining to large event facilities, recycling, and composting procedures. 13, Finance, Legal, and General Government Committee. A, the motion would be to approve the Finance Department Monthly Report for March 2025. B, the motion would be to approve the membership in the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and that membership dues in the amount of $3,582.54 be paid. C, the motion would be that the agreement with Thompson Weir LLC for Legislative Consulting Services be extended for fiscal year 2526. D, the motion would be to award a contract to J. DeVito Design, Inc., for the Code Enforcement Landscape Inspection Program and Planning Services, in an amount not to exceed $77,500. E, the motion would be to waive competitive bidding and approve a renewal of Microsoft 0365 Licensing Subscription and issue a pay-down purchase order to lift off LLC of Crafton, Maryland, up to the amount of the fiscal year 2526 budgeted amount. F, the motion would be to waive competitive bidding and approve renewal of Microsoft Azure Licensing Subscription and issue a pay-down purchase order to Microsoft Corporation of Redmond, Washington, in the amount of $180,000. G, the motion would be to approve issuing a purchase order to Tyler Technologies of Plano, Texas, for Year Two in the amount of $374,135.94. H, the motion would be to award the bid for the purchase of Fortinet Support Renewal and Endpoint Client Subscriptions to Southern Computer Warehouse, Inc. of Marietta, Georgia, in the amount of $98,807.11. I, the motion would be to approve continuation of technical staffing services with Tierra ITS of Parkridge, Illinois, and approve issuance of a pay-down purchase order in the amount of $274,690. J, the motion would be to execute a three-year agreement and associated annual payments to Comcast of Schaumburg, Illinois, for Metro E internet services in the amount of $159,936 for each year, and approve the required resolution. K, the motion would be to adopt an ordinance amending Schaumburg Municipal Code, Chapter 41, various sections of the village fee code, village fee schedule. L, the motion would be to authorize the village manager to execute a contract for Septemberfest Main Stage Production with Creative Audio of Rockford, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $78,079 for fiscal year 26, and approve the required resolution. 14, Transportation Committee. A, the motion would be to direct staff to proceed with the proposed improvements as part of Phase I Preliminary Engineering for the Martin Gale Road and Higgins Road Bike Path Project. B, the motion would be to approve a resolution authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute a license agreement by and between the Village of Schaumburg and Holiday Airways of Schaumburg, Illinois, for providing fixed-based operator services at the Schaumburg Regional Airport. 15, Plan Commission. A, the motion would be to approve a special use for an apiary for Forney Residence 226 Webster Lane. 16, Zoning Board of Appeals. A, the motion would be to approve a site plan amendment, special use amendment, for a drive-through facility, drive-through stacking variation, Woodfield Regional Center Design Review, 517 Mall Drive. B, the motion would be to approve a special use for a technical school for Harper College, 905 West Irving Park Road. C, the motion would be to approve a special use for a tattoo establishment for Inc. C. Tats, 1289 East Higgins Road. D, the motion would be to approve a special use for an internet auto sales facility for Chicago Motors Direct, 1116 Morse Avenue. 17, Project Review Group. A, the motion would be to approve a site plan amendment for Summit Grove Nitty Development, Common Area.
Pull, please.
Pull, please.
18, Award of Bid. A, the motion would be to approve the remaining payment for a three-year Barracuda Essential Service subscription from V-Cloud Tech, Inc. of Rolling Hills Estates, California, and issue a purchase order in the amount of $114,240. 19, Resolutions. A, the motion would be to adapt as Resolution Number R-25-028, approving and authorizing the execution of a consulting talent-buying agreement between Village of Schaumburg and Creative Audio. B, the motion would be to adapt as Resolution Number R-25-029, to utilize motor fuel funds in accordance with the Illinois Department of Transportation Resolution for Maintenance of Streets and Highways by Schaumburg under the Illinois Highway Code, 25 to 2025 to 2026. C, the motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-030, authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for the Walnut Lane Resurfacing and Multi-Use Path Project Phase I and II Design Services with Michael Baker International. D, the motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-031, authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for the Bodie Road Force Main Phase III Construction Administration with Sioba Group. E, the motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-032, authorizing village manager to execute an agreement between the Village of Schaumburg and Comcast for Metro E internet connection and PRI services, 25 through 27. F, the motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-033, authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement by and between the Village of Schaumburg and Holiday Airways for providing fixed-based operation services at the Schaumburg Regional Airport. Number 20, Ordinances. A, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-043, granting a special use for apiary for Forney Residence 226 Webster Lane. B, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-044, amending Title III, Chapter 41 Fee Schedule, Section A, General Fees, Cultural Services Rates. C, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-045, granting a site plan amendment, special use amendment, for a drive-through facility, drive-through stacking variation, Woodfield Regional Design Review for Shell Gas Station, 517 Mall Drive. D, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-046, granting a special use for a technical school for Harper College, 905 West Irving Park Road. E, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-, I'm sorry, I think that other one was 046. This is 047, granting a special use for a tattoo establishment for Inc. C. Tats, 1289 East Higgins Road. F, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-048, granting a special use for internet auto sales for Chicago Motors Direct, 1116 Morse Avenue.
Was that pulled?
No.
Was that pulled?
G, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-049, amending Title IX, Chapter 96 pertaining to large event facilities, recycling, and composting procedures. H, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as Ordinance Number 25-050, approving a purchase and sale agreement authorizing the sale by the Village of Schaumburg of real property located at 94 Long Avenue and 97 Long Avenue, Schaumburg, Illinois. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. I look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with item 17A under Project Review Group, pulled for further discussion.
So moved. Second?
Motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Patel is absent. Trustee Claire?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Medei?
Aye.
Trustee Bishke?
Aye.
Trustee LaRosa is absent.
Thank you. Committee reports. Under committee reports, we have the one item from the Project Review Group for a recommendation to approve a site plan amendment for Summit Grove for Nitty Development. I look for a motion to defer this to the June 10 board meeting?
So moved. Second?
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is comments from the public. It's an opportunity to come before the village board for items that are pertinent towards the Village of Schaumburg and have your say. So, if you have something, please step forward. Okay, moving on. Counsel report.
I have nothing, Mayor, other than to state that we do have need to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation.
Okay, so we will have executive session at the end of the meeting?
We will not be returning.
And we will not be returning. Okay. All right, anything else?
No.
All right. President's report. I actually have two items. One is resignations, appointments, et cetera, and it's an appointment of Judith Trent to the Blood Program Committee with the term ending April 30, 2026.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. The other item I have is, I had the opportunity to participate in Arbor Day tree planting. Unfortunately, it was raining, but it was still a good time. Mike Hall, our director of public works, had some great people there doing a great presentation with the kids. They got all excited. The teachers had to keep telling them to settle down, but that's all right. They were excited. They had a couple of people, Trustee Bishke was there, and Trustee Medei. So, it was, it turned out very good. So, that was, I forget the exact date of it, but it was a good time. And I did want to mention that, if, I don't remember us having mentioned this already, but Schaumburg earned the 2024 Tree City USA Growth Award recognition for Arbor Day Foundation. Did we cover this one already, Mike, or no? No? Don't think so. Anyway, it's, the Arbor Day Foundation is named Schaumburg at 2024 Tree City USA in honor of its commitment to plant, grow, and maintain trees to benefit its community. Schaumburg also received a growth award for demonstrating improved levels of tree care and community engagement. And I can vouch for my two trees that I planted last year, so, of course, I had to take out three that were mold, which is unfortunate, but anyway, they were three scrub trees, actually. So, these are better trees. I planted some nice, good maples, so. Anyway, it was very nice. Hopefully, you've got this, already got this, and we're sitting good, so, thank you very much, and congratulations on that. That's all I have. Managers' report.
I have no report this evening.
Okay. Trustee comments and mentions? Anyone this evening?
I planted, I planted a couple Quaken Aspens about 12 years ago, and now I've got about 15 trees.
Holy cow, okay.
They grow. They're round, yes.
Excuse me. Down the wrong way. Okay. Look for a motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Section 2, subsection C11 of the Open Meetings Act for litigation. When an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds an action is probable or imminent, in which case, the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
So moved. Second?
Motion in a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Roll call, we need a roll call.
Yep.
Trustee Patel is absent. Trustee Claire?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Medei?
Yes.
Trustee Bishke?
Aye.
Trustee LaRosa is absent.
Okay, thank you. We will adjourn across the hall to executive session.